Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's June sixth, two thousand and twenty four open session. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the role?
Certainly, Commissioner Cozart.
You.
Commissioner McMahon.
I am here.
Thank you. Commissioner Stidham.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
I'm here.
Good. Great. Vice Chair Hewlett.
Here.
Chair Goodman.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Tenstall Williams.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon. Okay, Commissioner Cash. Present. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hassan.
Here.
I'll note that Marcela Costa, the Executive Director, Diane Sullivan with the Urban Design and Plan Review, and Mike Sherman with the Policy and Research Division are also in the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Costa. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Excuse me. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. And if there's no objection, the agenda as posted will be adopted as the order of business for today. And now we will play a short clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until the renovations in the commission chambers are complete. And I want to share how we will be conducting commission business, following staff presentations and any other testimony. I will ask for a motion and a second as appropriate. During commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments or input. At other times, commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and ask to be recognized. So today, beginning today, a very, very special auspicious occasion. Agenda item number two is a report from the chair. In today's commission meeting is marks the official centennial of the National Capital Planning Commission. On June sixth, nineteen twenty four, Congress authorized the creation of the National Capitol Park Commission to advance ideas for a beautiful symbolic capital and the needs of the growing federal government, as well as the needs of a growing community. And I want to recognize the dedication, vision, and work of the chairs who preceded me, the commission members who preceded all of us, and the agency's staff that have all created an incredible legacy. And I want to call out especially our staff who make so much possible and continue to keep this vision of an iconic capital of the United States alive. I'm honored to share a letter today from President Joe Biden commemorating the agency's centennial, and I would like to read it into the record.
Nice.
I send, I send my warmest regards to the National Capital Planning Commission as you celebrate your one hundredth anniversary. Washington, D.C. is more than just a place where people live and visit. In the land of possibilities, the district reflects America's highest aspirations and represents our shared values. The character of our country is symbolized in the monuments, the memorials, statues, and public buildings and spaces that make our nation's capital a beacon of hope for the entire world. There is no, that's in no small part because of the hard work of the generations of women and men who have made up the NCPC. Since it was established one century ago, the NCPC has been critical to making sure that Washington, D.C. serves as a source of inspiration and opportunity. By overseeing the quality of federal facilities, encouraging organized economic and social development, leading initiatives that will determine the district's future and so much more, the NCPC has made an immense impact on the lives of so many. I'm grateful for your efforts, and I look forward to seeing you continue to chart a better course for our nation's capital. On this centennial anniversary, I hope you feel great pride in the role the NCPC has played in preserving the legacy of Washington, D.C. while promoting a positive vision for its future. Your dedication is key to ensuring the district forever remains a wellspring of possibility. Keep the faith, Joe Biden. And so I'm very grateful to the president for sending a letter on this centennial occasion. And I do hope that all of you feel pride, great pride, in the work that we do collectively. Later tonight, six P M. at the Martin Luther King Junior Library downtown, we will launch an exhibit, Planning, Washington, Capital and Community. And we will host a discussion with a great panel to reflect on the agency's history and lessons learned that can inform our work today. I hope you're able to attend and can visit the exhibit while it's at the downtown library for the next three months and at other venues across the city later in the year. Later on in today's agenda, we will consider updates to the comprehensive plan. I hope that as commissioners, as commissioners provide their comments on these proposals, you will also take a moment to reflect on the agency's history and how it can inform our work on this centennial anniversary. Agenda item number three is report of the Executive Director, Mr. Marcela Costa.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and happy one hundredth birthday to NCPC. I want to take this moment to acknowledge the excellent work my colleagues have done in preparing for our centennial activities. First, many thanks to Julia Costa, Miss Robyn Gebbie, Stephen Stodigl, Steve Morgan, Paul Jutton, Cale Anderson, and Joanne McCran for their outstanding work at organizing NCPC's Centennial Exhibit, our online planning library, and tonight's opening event at Alma K. Library. Last month, NCPC hosted the American Planning Association Federal Planning Division Annual Training Workshop to help us celebrate our centennial and highlight the importance of federal planning. I want to thank our entire NCPC team for their excellent work and contributions, especially Diane Sullivan and Jamie Herr, who led our efforts. I'd also like to introduce our summer student interns have joined the agency. So if you're pinned on Zoom and raise your hand when I introduce you, we first have Justine Brandis, who is a rising junior at Georgetown University. Her area of focus is interdisciplinary studies and urban sustainability. We also have Sorora Abdulrazak, who is a graduate student with a concentration in transportation planning at the University of Maryland Planning Program. We have Michael Lopez, a University of Texas at Austin Senior Majoring in Government and Humanities with minors in LGBTQ Studies and Architectural History. We look forward to their unique insights and fresh ideas as our interns will contribute to our projects. So welcome to NCPC. Finally, as we mark the commission's one hundredth year, I want to acknowledge the NCPC commissioners and staff, our colleagues at the D.C. Office of Planning, and planners throughout the Capitol region, past, present, and future have devoted their careers to serving the public, our communities, and our capital. Thank you for your service and efforts of making our region a better place for all. This concludes today's report. You have my written report in your packets. I would happy, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Acosta. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Acosta, whose leadership has been invaluable and is just such a very strong rudder for our organization. Thank you, Marcel. And I also want to again thank the staff and the commissioners. It's, this is just a wonderful, wonderful celebration. And I've had the pleasure of meeting all the interns, and they're really outstanding young people and of course, give a lot of hope for the future, not just of NCPC and planning in the, in the district and the Capitol region, but also for the future in general. We're welcome and thank you for picking NCPC for your internship. So moving on, did the commission have any questions for Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, there will be no legislative report this month. And there is also not, there are no items on the consent agenda, so we will not have the, that, those on our agenda this month. So we're going to turn to the open session items now. Agenda item four A is to adopt the comprehensive plan introduction, introduction chapter update. The following agenda item is to adopt updates to the submission guidelines. Since these items are related, I'm going to ask Ms. Ms. Drakeford and Ms. Shipman to provide their presentations together. And then the commission will ask questions and deliberate, and we will act on each agenda item separately. So to be clear, the presentation is together, but we will have two motions, ask for two motions following the presentations. And if there are no objections to that, we will proceed. Hearing none, Ms. Drakeford and Ms. Shipman, can you please begin your presentation? Thank you.
Or good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. My name is Brittany Drakeford. I'm an urban planner with the Policy and Research Division. I'm here today to present on the revised introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan with the request to adopt the updated introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol Federal Elements. As you all are aware, the comprehensive plan is NCPC's blueprint for the long-term development of the national capital and the decision-making framework for the commission's actions on plans, proposals, and policies submitted for its review. By updating the introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan, we sought to design a comprehensive approach and goals related to social, health, and racial equity and environmental sustainability and resiliency, which would inform future element updates and other planning initiatives led by the agency. The final introduction chapter is a result of nearly two years of research, stakeholder engagement, and internal discussions about the past, present, and future federal planning in the nation's capital. Throughout this time, our team has briefed you on our work. In March of two thousand and twenty three, we held an information presentation with the commission outlining the proposed updates to the comprehensive plan introduction chapter, following some initial outreach activities. And again, in December of two thousand and twenty three, we met with the commission, and the commission authorized the release of the draft introduction chapter for a ninety-day public comment period. Revisions to the introduction chapter were catalyzed from this, from guidance from this administration that seeks to address equity, which includes Executive Order thirteen nine eight five and Executive Order fourteen zero nine one, both of which directs the federal government and its agencies to pursue a comprehensive approach to advancing equity for all, including people of color and others who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality. Additionally, NCPC's efforts respond to Executive Order fourteen zero zero eight and Executive Order fourteen zero nine six that both look at addressing environmental and health impacts as a result of climate change. Most excitedly, the revision of the introduction chapter serves as one of many focal points of our agency's centennial. One hundred years ago, to the day, NCPC's predecessor agency, the National Capitol Park Commission, was established. The agency's centennial is being used as an opportunity to examine the legacy of planning and development in the region and specifically NCPC's role where planning efforts resulted in inequitable outcomes and how that shapes communities today, while looking forward to explore how the agency and others are working, working to rectify those impacts. As a brief refresher, I would like to walk through the major changes that we made to the introduction chapter, which were presented to you in December of two thousand and twenty three, prior to the public comment period. The revisions to the introduction chapter provide additional context to the development of Washington, D.C. prior to seventeen ninety one and broadens the historical context of development of Washington over the last century. We included a new section titled Confronting the Legacy: Examining the Impacts of NCPC's Past, which reflects on three legacy policies and programs that have had unjust planning impacts on underserved communities in the national capital region. In addition to equity-related revisions, our team updated statistical information to examine current trends and address pressing land use challenges, such as environmental sustainability and resiliency, commemoration diversity, urban space insecurity, and the changing nature and location of work due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the shrinking federal footprint. We also revised the Smart Growth Principle to align with the urgency to plan federal buildings, lands, and campuses, considering the unpredictability of climate change and which encompasses traditional smart growth planning practices, while also emphasizing planning for ecological compatibility and resilience in the face of climate change. Finally, informed by stakeholder meetings, discussions with our agency's Equity Task Force and the executive orders, we developed a new equity-focused guiding principle to inform future amendments to the federal elements with consideration to equity. The new equity-focused principle, referencing the introduction chapter as Guiding Principle number four, reads as follows: To incorporate, to promote equitable development and opportunity for underserved communities. The corresponding key objectives highlight important components of equity and are organized in a thematic framework. And those key objective things include community engagement, cultural affirmation and diversity, data analysis, economic development, physical access, and sustainability, resilience, and health. In December of two thousand and twenty three, the commission authorized the release of the draft introduction chapter for a ninety-day public comment period, which ended on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty four. During the public comment period, staff held two public meetings with a total participation of thirty eight participants. We received comments from ten people or organizations, including the Committee of a Hundred, Arlington County, and the General Services Administration. Following the end of the public comment period, staff engaged with interested parties on the major changes to the introduction chapter. We presented the introduction chapter and equity updates at the two thousand and twenty four American Planning Divi, American Planning Association's Federal Planning Division's Annual Training Workshop. And we also met with the district's Office of Racial Equity, which is housed in the mayor's office. We are scheduled to meet with the Anna Coster Coordinating Council in July of two thousand and twenty four to further discuss the updated chapter. In total, we received fifty six comments and organized those comments into four general domains. To make the document more user reader-friendly, to acknowledge that the nation's capital, the nation's capital includes people who live and work here in addition to its symbolic and representative functions as the nation's capital, as the nation's capital, to describe how multimodal transportation networks helps to achieve regional and sustainable, regional sustainability goals, and to expand the narrative around the history of land use and development in Washington, D.C. and throughout the national capital region. Included as Appendix B in the Executive Director's recommendation, staff prepared a consolidated comments document. This document identifies the public comments that we receive, staff's analysis of that comment, and how we responded to that comment for inclusion in the, in the updated introduction chapter. Also included in, as Appendix C is the updated introduction chapters markup. This document identifies the changes from the introduction chapter as released in December of two thousand and twenty three to the introduction chapter, which was revised in two thousand and twenty four. And both of these documents were requested as part of the public comment, public comments that we received. I will now highlight how we incorporated the public's feedback into the revised introduction chapter. So we received multiple comments about the importance of recognizing that in addition to being the nation's capital, Washington, D.C. is also a city full of people who live and work here. To respond to these comments, we added a new call out in the federal impact in the region section, highlighting that the nation, the national capital region is a diverse region home to more than five million people, noting that nearly a hundred and seventy-five different languages are spoken in the area, as well as the region being one of the most educated and affluent metropolitan areas in the United States. We've also incorporated graphs and maps throughout the document reflecting this reality. From the presence, presence of the American bison in the national capital region to the establishment of the McMillan Commission, we heard from community stakeholders to incorporate more information about the history of land use and development in the region. One commenter requested that there be specific information included about the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation. In response to this request, we've added a paragraph about the development of the corporation and its work in redeveloping the avenue throughout its twenty-three-year history. In response to internal discussions held during the public comment period, a fourth legacy policy was incorporated into the section Confronting the Legacy. And this relates to highway construction and the displacement of families as a, as a result of the new connections. While new highways provided easier access to employment centers and amenities for, for residents across the region, the development of the freeway system drastically changed the city's social and demographic makeup. The construction of I three ninety-five and six ninety-five alone displaced at least four thousand seven hundred people in nineteen sixty, in nineteen sixty and destroyed at least fourteen hundred homes in the southwest community. Notably, in response to urban renewal and freeway construction programs in southwest Washington, D.C., Elizabeth Rowe, the first female chair of the National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, authorized the development of a study, Social Impact of a Highway on an Urban Community. The report documented the social implications and relocation requirements of the North Leg of the Inner Loop in nineteen sixty-three. Libby Rowe's contributions to this, to study the effects of the highway construction were also included in the update. The introduction chapter also includes a new section titled Critical Planning Challenges, which describes several compelling planning matters that federal planners and policymakers must address with urgency in the twenty-first century. In response to public comments that the introduction chapter should clarify actionable strategies to reduce automobile dependency, connect historical automobile infrastructure impacts with present, with present-day social conditions and environmental hazards, staff developed a new critical planning challenge focusing on transportation and mobility. The added critical planning challenge discusses the evolving transportation landscape in the Washington, D.C. region, particularly in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, highlighting changes relating, related to ensuring safe, reliable, and accessible transportation options, addressing congestion, reducing car reliance, mitigating air pollution, and addressing funding issues for public transportation systems like Wamata. The final update that we made in response to public feedback was to revise the document to make it more user-friendly. As part of this, we've included maps, graphs, and photographs for visual emphasis such, such as this chart that compares the amount of federally-owned office square footage to federally-leased square footage by jurisdiction in the national capital region. We've also provided citations and references for historical statements, helping the text read evenly. Finally, we've incorporated four new definitions to support clarifying the intentions of the introduction chapter and to support in a consistent interpretation of the federal elements. Newly defined terms include equitable development, sustainability, resilience, and adaptation. These revisions help to enhance accessibility while also making the document clear for readers. Following the adoption of the introduction chapter, staff will continue to engage with the public and local and federal government stakeholders on the new equity principle and key objectives. We will also work to develop tools to evaluate the comprehensive plan and future element updates with an equity focus, such as the Equity Crosswalk, which will identify and analyze policies and actions throughout the comprehensive plan that either advance or restrict equity objectives. With that, staff recommends that the commission approves the final adoption of the updates to the introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan for the national capital federal elements. With notes, the staff will develop a process to evaluate the comprehensive plan and future element updates with an equity lens, specific deliverables to include the development of an equity crosswalk tool to identify and analyze policies and actions throughout the comprehensive plan that either advance or restrict equity objectives. Also with note that the updated introduction chapter will be effective sixty days after the notice of final rulemaking is published in the Federal Register, consistent with the effective date of NCPC's revised submission guidelines. A final note is that following commission adoption, staff will incorporate any changes as directed by the commission and will complete minor editorial updates to the text and graphics to ensure document accuracy and consistency. With that, I will now turn it over to Laura Shipman, who will provide an overview of the revised submission guidelines, which are being updated in coordination with the introduction chapter.
Thank you, Brittany. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. Building on the previous presentation, I will now present the corresponding equity updates to the submission guidelines. We are returning to the commission for final approval and adoption of these updates. As a reminder, the equity updates amend the submission guidelines to reflect the comprehensive plan guidance in the updated introduction chapter. The aim is to encourage applicants to conduct early and meaningful community engagement and to submit information about the equity impacts of plans and projects to inform the decision-making process. These updates build on the work that many applicant agencies are already doing to tackle issues of equitable development and environmental justice, particularly in their own responses to current executive orders. The updates to the guidelines are organized by the six equity key objectives outlined in the introduction chapter to frame review for consistency with the comprehensive plan. Equity considerations will be discussed as early as possible in project development and will be integrated into all stages of the project review process, from pre-submission briefing to final review with increasing specificity. Responses may be cross-referenced with other documents that analyze these same considerations, such as National Environmental Policy Act and National Historic Preservation Act Section one oh six Analysis, to not create a duplicative process. The commission last reviewed the draft equity updates to the guidelines at the December two thousand and twenty three meeting and emphasized the importance of effective engagement and economic opportunity in underserved communities. Questions and comments from the public centered primarily on the plan review process, applicant agency community engagement, and how to address past harms to underserved communities. Based on the feedback received, the submission guidelines have been revised to incorporate commission recommendations, public comments, and guidance from stakeholder agencies. The primary revisions include clarifications of the equity considerations and updates to applicability requirements to include permanent antenna projects as recommended by the commission. The guidelines currently have extensive considerations for antennas related to design, historic preservation, environmental impacts, and safety certifications. However, the additional equity considerations are proposed in areas often overburdened by infrastructure impacts yet underserved. The overall intent of applying the equity submission requirements to permanent antenna projects is to balance the need to provide adequate telecommunications coverage while ensuring careful review of cumulative impacts to underserved communities. As noted previously, questions about the plan review process and applicant agency community engagement were raised in stakeholder and public discussions. Staff communicated the iterative nature of NCPC's review and the opportunities for public involvement. The guidelines update recommends applicants discuss engagement plans with staff in pre-submission meetings to ensure the level of engagement is appropriate for the type of project proposed and community context. NCPC also strongly recommends applicant coordination with local jurisdictions to understand local equity issues and concerns. NCPC review will include an analysis of anticipated equity impacts, any considerations that have not been addressed by the proposal, and recommended strategies to better meet the comprehensive plan equity guidance. Staff has developed a resource guide to support applicant agencies in applying an equity lens to their master plan and project submissions. It includes a summary of NCPC equity guidance, sources of equity data, and community engagement tools and resources. All NCPC resource guides can be found on our website. With that, staff recommends the commission approve the final adoption of the equity updates to the submission guidelines. The revised guidelines will be effective sixty days after the notice of final rulemaking is published in the Federal Register, consistent with the effective date of the updated introduction chapter. And that concludes our presentations. We are available to answer any questions on either the introduction chapter or the submission guidelines updates. And as a reminder, after combined deliberations, the commission will take action on each item separately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Drakeford and Ms. Shipman. Do Commissioners have any questions at this time? Any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to open the discussion up now for, on both items. Either items, you can bring up either one at any time. And I just ask that you turn on your cameras and your mics and a reminder that there will be a motion on each item separately at the end of our discussion. So I'm going to start the round robin deliberations with Ms. Commissioner Cozart, please.
Sure, and thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. So I'll share comments on this. uh, this and also comments on the one hundred year milestone as well. So I just want to commend, uh, the entire NCPC team for uh, this one hundred year milestone and the intentional approach that you've taken to recognizing uh, the one hundred years. Um, so I want to share just like a quick story about why that intentionality is important. So, um, I moved to Washington about twenty years ago and one of the first projects that I worked on uh, was what would then become the two thousand and six comprehensive plan. Um, and so in planning school, uh, I was playing school in California. We learned about that our general plans need to have land use elements and they need to have housing elements and transportation, environment, and all the like. Um, so you can imagine I was a little surprised, uh, when to find out that the uh, comp plan here in DC would have federal elements. And so that began a quick learning journey for me uh, into that relationship, that kind of dynamic relationship of how power uh, and responsibility are wielded between, uh, the, the district decision-makers and federal decision-makers. Um, so I really want to commend, uh, today's NCPC for the explicit ways that you've acknowledged um, that sometimes that, uh, power has been wielded in ways that has caused harm, particularly to, uh, Black and people of color communities. And I also want to commend today's NCPC for examining how the commission practices and its work products, like the comprehensive plan, can take responsible actions to really move forward with an understanding of those past harms. And I think the introduction chapter and the submission guidelines are evidence of that examination, uh, right, uh, uh, in action. And I also want to commend today's NCPC for building relationships uh, with the district so that there's ways to collaboratively wield that power, uh, that really benefits district residents, um, workers, visitors, stakeholders, people who care, um, about our nation's capital. And I think that today's urgent challenges around racial equity, around climate change, around political polarization, all of those are really going to continue to test those relationships, um, for the next hundred years as we look ahead. Um, so very happy to be at this milestone. Um, and also we need to ready ourselves for, uh, those challenges and the work ahead and cultivate, uh, leaderships or le, leadership among, um, those who are coming after us uh, and build a path for those who are going to follow in our footsteps. So, um, really appreciate the great work of staff, particularly on these two work products. I think they couldn't be more timely, uh, given, uh, this, uh, uh, centennial. Um, and, uh, I know you all have worked really hard, uh, to get to this state, so really want to commend the staff uh, for your extensive work, your community engagement around these two particular products. Um, so that, that is, uh, the feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Um, well said. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. Um, first off, uh, a lot of hard work over the last months on the part of the staff to pull these together, been watching the development and, uh, from my position over here as representing Secretary of Defense, it's been interesting and, and fun to watch. I really have no questions about the product. I do want to just follow on a, a story over the last couple of three months. Um, I've had great opportunity to explore the history of NCPC and its role and development, uh, especially in the federal, um, environment and national capital region as we work with the Army as they look at what they're doing in their installations, uh, recently with support from Marcel Acosta and Diane Sullivan and others. And it just, uh, brought to me as I looked at that from the founding, just how important NCPC has been and what they're doing. And I'll just continue as I look at it to play as strong a role as I can and support NCPC from this position, um, both in terms of overall, um, how they affect development in the national capital region. And secondly, how DOD can continue to support those goals. So, uh, thanks, and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioners Stidham.
First of all, uh, happy one hundred years. That's a very big milestone and I, you have to echo a lot of what Commissioner Kozart said. Um, the, uh, the work that the, that you have done, um, to improve this section is, is amazing and I think well timed and very responsible in, in taking a look at past history, uh, not just the glories, but also what probably wasn't so well. Um, and acknowledging that those, you know, are things that should have happened and, and learning from towards the future. So no real comments other than congratulations for the great work, um, and another hundred years.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
Here.
I think, uh, Commissioner Argo, I think you're on mute.
Has it's.
We can hear you.
Sorry, I appreciate, I don't have a lot to add to what, um, my, uh, commission, the commissioners before me have said. But, um, being, being so supportive and so, um, appreciative of the work that's been done to address um, equity issues in a way that I would imagine, even though I don't have history here, um, had not been a, 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 addressed as, um, centrally or forcefully in, in the earlier plans and comprehensive plans and updates as they are being, um, addressed today. And, um, just, uh, I'm enormously appreciative of the work that's gone into that and the emphasis that's been put on equity concerns as, as the plan is developed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt.
Uh, yes, good afternoon, everyone. Um, first of all, I fully, uh, echo the sentiments, um, set forth by Commissioner Kozart and the others. I mean, she pretty much captured everything very nicely and eloquently. Um, I'd like to commend our Cracker Jack professional team for the centennial present, uh, celebration, um, and education, because it's not, we're not just celebrating and saying woo-hoo, we're educating people on everything that has transpired over these past hundred years. And that's why this exhibit is so important and the, uh, briefings are so important. Um, I'd like to thank our predecessors, all those who came before us for bringing us to this point and, uh, and we are taking it from here. Um, I'd like to thank Ms. Drakeford and Ms. Ms. Shipman for their very thorough presentations. You, both of you did a spectacular job. And I just have to thank the president for those executive orders to force us to look at these things which are so vital to our, to our na, national capital region. The equity, the sustainability of the diversity, the climate change, and so much more. And the fact that we have put together this resource guide to help people so no one can fumble around out there and say, well, we didn't know what to do. You've laid it out for everyone to understand, and I think that was a wonderful tool, um, to assist, um, the agencies as well. And it's ve, very, very important. I'm really pleased that you put an emphasis also on working not just with the District of Columbia, but all the neighboring jurisdictions, because there are local e, equity issues that may be, that may vary somewhat. So I think that's very important as well. Um, I'm just, I just have to tell you, it's, you know, it's one of those uplifting moments for us, an uplifting moment for me to see that we're doing the right thing and focusing on things that have been um, somewhat neglected and suppressed in the past. It's the right time, it's the right thing to do, it's overdue, but I commend staff for taking the bull by the horns and we're doing it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. And Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much. That was wonderful. I appreciate the presentation very much and, um, and I really appreciate the way this is positioned. And I mean, all, all, all great celebrations should include a moment of, 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 of reckoning, a moment of, of self-reflection. And I think if, if, if you, when you do history as an historian, if it's not at least a little bit uncomfortable, you're not doing it right. And, um, and I, it's just so wonderful to see those things, you know, in tandem here. And yes, wonderful things have happened, but some things happened, there was a cost. And, um, and that cost hasn't gone away. And, and I, I look forward to the continuing discussion of how, um, you know, how we can celebrate while also correcting the things that, um, should have been done differently. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Um, Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
Yes, thank you. Hard to have much to add after all of the, um, wonderful comments of the previous commissioners, um, particularly Commissioner Kozart and Commissioner Green. Um, I, I'd like to thank the staff and the, and the great work that they've done. Um, and not only are we looking back at a hundred years, but we're looking forward at the next hundred. And I think the timing, as Commissioner Green said, is very important. It's a, it's an opportunity to reflect and figure out how we move forward. And I think combined with, um, the equity, the community engagement, the, the climate change and resiliency are all the critical challenges that we're going to face, particularly now as we're looking at remaking the city and what happens to the city post-COVID, how do we revitalize it? And I think all of these elements are really key, um, and will play a huge role in, in the shape that the city takes moving forward. So, again, congratulations to the commission on a hundred years and thank you to the staff on the great work. Nothing else to add.
Thank you very much, Commiss, Commissioner Tunstall Williams and Commissioner Dixon.
First of all, I, uh, save a lot of time by just associating myself with the past comments of commissioners and probably the ones to come. I do want to make a couple of statements though. First of all, uh, uh, here we are recognizing NCPC's one hundred years of initial just protecting parks and now the Anacostia Park, which is one of the major focuses where it started, is back in play, uh, in the land of our Anacostia River East, which is very important to me. But, uh, this one hundred years is a celebration, uh, of so much more. As NCPC has his ter, history of sensitive, professionally engagement of the public, local governments, federal governments, commission staff, and board in carrying out its missions. Uh, I have been honored to be a commissioner for over thirty years plus and, and a native of resident of ours, which is an area that I still feel has, has maybe reached the time where we really need the most from the commission. Uh, Mayor Barry Williams, Fenty Gray, and Bowers have allowed me to work, uh, on NCPC board, uh, outstanding, uh, with outstanding, uh, fellow commissioners, staff, executive directors like Reg Griffin and, and Marcel Acosta, and of course our new chair, uh, M, Ms. Goodman. Uh, in doing so, I have some of a, a number of interesting lifecycle projects which have gone from approval to building, to demolition, and to rebuilding, like the DC Convention Center, Dunbar High School, St. Elizabeth's, uh, extending the legacy, which is, is, has been put together and still modifying as we speak, as well as the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation and more. These are lifecycle ones that I've had a chance to see start and end. Uh, there has been many memorable and challenging projects and actions. Uh, one of the particular is significant to me is we went out to place, make a motion to place the marker for the, for the MLK speech. I have a dream uh, where he's actually made the speech, when some agencies had recommended it be put on the side in the grass outside of the memorial, which I thought was inappropriate. Uh, as we move into the coming years, I particularly look forward to our equitable efforts in our Anacostia River East, like the development at St. Elizabeth's and Anacostia Park. Today is a day for a community to join us to celebrate the past, present, and future. I am, uh, looking forward to the cupcakes and, uh, enjoying together, joining together at MLK Laboratory. So thank you for this few minutes, I, thank you, Madam Chair and others.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Cash unfortunately cannot be with us today due to work requirements and Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the comments of the other commissioners in the presentation here. Uh, nothing else to add. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hassett.
Yes, I also don't have any questions at this time, but I'd like to thank both of the presenters for their presentations.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hassett. I would just like to begin again, uh, by recognizing the staff. This presentation was excellent. Um, and I want to thank all the staff, um, and the other commissioners. I, 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 like all of you have said, I, I am pleased to be associated with you. When I was a young child, my father used to tell, uh, me and, uh, my six siblings that he was so happy to be related to us. And, um, you know, I feel the same way about this, uh, group of professionals, both commissioners and the staff. This is uh, an outstanding, um, day to celebrate, an occasion to celebrate, but also uh, this updated introductory chapter is, um, was really breathtaking. I have thoroughly enjoyed reading and rereading it. As many others have said, I think that it reflects to the time, uh, and the, um, and the request from the administration to include equity and climate, which I think is extremely timely, as Vice Chair Hewitt said, and it's, it's, it's certainly not a minute too soon. Um, it's, it's, we've got to keep, we've got to keep working as others have mentioned. So I just want to say though that I, I'm thankful to the staff for their incredible hard work and I'm thankful on this particular report for the outreach to the community and engaging all the partners that could be engaged in, in revising, uh, this document. And I also appreciated the, um, uh, the graphing of the, the input and the sort of the, uh, actions taken with the input that was received. And also excited about the deliverables that staff has set for themselves as we go forward. Very excited to see and learn more about those as, as that unfolds. But today does mark a significant milestone as we celebrate the hundredth anniversary of the National Capitol Parks Commission. For a century, the agency has been dedicated to preserving the natural beauty of our capital and enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. One hundred years ago to this date, our agency was established with a clear mission to acquire parkland, protect our environment, and foster comprehensive development. As we reflect on our past achievements, we also reaffirm our commitment to these founding principles through these updates to the introduction, introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan. And this in, introduction chapter incorporates insights from NCPC's equity and climate action plans, ensuring that equity and climate resiliency considerations are fully integrated into our planning process. By embracing these, by embracing these principles, we can better anticipate and respond to emerging issues, ensuring that our planning efforts remain relevant and effective in the face of evolving circumstances. So again, excellent presentation, a wonderful day to hear, um, these updates and thank you to all the staff. Are there any further questions or comments from the commissioners at this time? With that, then we will. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was, I, I just wanted to ma, mention an odd comm, co, co, uh, connection in that we're celebrating the eightieth year for the, uh, World War Two, awful war, which we celebrate today, which is a, uh, about an awful event. And here we are celebrating one hundred years of an entity that has been about doing good things and still is about doing good things. So I think it's a, so it shows, I mean, our value is, is great.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that input, Commissioner Dixon. Yes, we celebrate D-Day today as well. So, um, thank you for that. Is there a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan introduction chapter update?
Madam Chair. Final adoption, okay, of the updated introduction chapter of the comprehensive plan of, for the national capital. And if, we, I will defer to, um, uh, Commissioner Dixon and I will make that my second.
Thank you.
Hey. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote?
Uh, yes, I can. Uh, it, uh, Commissioner Dixon made the motion and, uh, Vice Chair Hewitt made the second to adopt the comprehensive plan introduction chapter update. Yeah, and with that, should I take the roll call?
Um, I, I think that would be fine. Thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Abstain.
Okay, well, the motion clearly passes. Uh, and we will now take up agenda item four E. Is there a motion to adopt the updates to the agency's submission guidelines?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the final adoption of the equity updates to the submission guidelines.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Costa, can you read the motion in, in seconds, please?
You bet. Uh, uh, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt, uh, seconded by The motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett, seconded by Commissioner Argo. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. And so we'll move on to Agenda Item 4B is a request to approve final site development plans for the Shepherd Parkway Parkland Rehabilitation. Ms. Hare, I believe you're making the presentation today.
I am. Thank you. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. The National Park Service has submitted for your review and approval the final site plans for the Shepherd Parkway Parklands Rehabilitation at 500 Parkland Place Southeast in Washington DC. The site is located in southeast DC at the intersection of Malcolm X Avenue Southeast and Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue Southeast and is part of the larger Shepherd Parkway. The existing site has an extensive tree canopy transitioning to dense forests to the west. Surrounding the site on two sides are major neighborhood thoroughfares, making the location prominent and visible. The site is in poor condition and the community has provided extensive input on needed improvements. The commission last saw the preliminary design in November and requested that the applicant provide more details on hardscape materials and furnishings, plantings, tree preservation, lighting, stormwater management, and recommended more coordination with DC agencies on access and programming improvements. Since the preliminary review, the applicant has worked with the community and stakeholders to complete the design that will result in an accessible, functional and safe neighborhood space. The final design includes a public gathering space on the east side with pavers and a flexible use space for events, utilizing a metal mesh surface that was included to protect existing tree roots. There's also a picnic area and a community garden in the center. Toward the western end are large dual age playground spaces with nature inspired playground elements. Other amenities such as benches are spread throughout the park. The applicant has also provided two mid-block crossings on the south side to provide better access to the neighborhood. The design includes the retention of most of the healthy existing tree canopy and the addition of new trees, as noted here. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a variety of plants and planting areas in the final landscape plan, as noted here. We did receive a public comment regarding the landscape plan, specifically about the lack of pollinators and the inclusion of cultivars and non-native species. The comments were forwarded to the applicant, who responded that the proposed meadow seeding mix is 100% Mid-Atlantic native species and includes multiple varieties of milkweed, including common milkweed. In addition, the design has prioritized the original native species featuring numerous species native to the Mid-Atlantic. The planting plan does include cultivars Saris Queen Yarrow and Rododendron Nova Zembla. These two cultivars are appropriate for the site because neither are double flowered, which decreases the excess of pollinators to the blooms. Furthermore, the design team chose the Nova Zembla because its size of five by five is compatible with the compact planting area. Other larger species would overwhelm this space. The applicant has done extensive work to improve the design and address the commission's previous comments. The final design meets the community's needs and will create an inviting and safe neighborhood gathering space. The design also meets NCPC Tree Preservation Policy and Pollinator Best Practice Guide. As such, staff recommends the commission approve the final site plans. This concludes my presentation. I have listed the executive director's recommendations here for your reference. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Mike Camiso, Deputy Superintendent for the National Capital Parks East, is here to make a few remarks. And the design team is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hare. Do we have another presentation? No? I'm sorry, I thought you had someone here to speak to this too, but let's just move on. We have, we have any questions from the commissioners today?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dixon, Commissioner Dixon?
I just wanted to congratulate this effort because we've been, the Anacostia Coordinating Council, this was one of our pet projects when we didn't have resources and the support, that things weren't moving forward. We maintained and cleaned it, not me, but folks were working in the community to do it. So we're real pleased to see this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Any other comments or questions at this point in time from the commission? Hearing none, we do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Bernard Byrne. If you would like, you have three minutes to provide testimony and please let us know when you're ready. Mr. Byrne? Ms. Costa, is Mr. Byrne present?
I believe he is present. He was a minute or so ago, so let me see if I can check with my staff.
Chair Goodman, while, while we're waiting.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, Mr. Byrne, could you hold one minute? I think Commissioner Stidham had a question.
Oh, okay.
I just noticed that Deputy Superintendent Camiso has joined us. Who wanted to say a few words about the project. He wasn't here when it was his turn.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much. I thought I was not just imagining that. Thank you very much. Mr. Byrne, if you'd be so kind, if you could just hold for a moment. We have a little bit more of a report here from Mr. Mike Camiso. And Mike, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Mike Camiso. I'm the Deputy Superintendent at National Capital Parks East. Can everybody hear me? Great.
Yes.
I'm pleased to be here today as we discuss the parkland rehabilitation project. This is the first phase of an $11.8 million park improvement project for MPS sites east of the Anacostia River. Parkland was identified as a priority by the community in the Shepherd Parkway Development Concept Plan. The revised design, as Ms. Hare shared, really reflects our commitment to creating a space that can accommodate both children and adults while preserving the natural beauty of the park. I want to highlight a couple of the key pieces about the design, which was shared with you earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that's a focus. Tree preservation and avoidance was a major design consideration at Parkland. The size and configuration of the playground, had the walkways, picnic and plaza areas were driven by avoiding critical root zones of the mature trees. The design has prioritized the original native species featuring numerous species native to the Mid-Atlantic. Finally, the overall design and inclusion of park amenities were driven by community input. The proposal expands the playground to include new equipment suitable for children's ages two through five and six through 12. This will create an engaging environment for our youngest visitors. The plaza will be expanded and upgraded to better accommodate daily use and special events. They'll make the space more versatile and welcoming for various community activities. And we're also adding, again, hearing from the community, garden boxes, picnic areas with grills, enhanced seating, improved lighting, and also opportunities for public art installations. These additions aim to foster a sense of community and enhance the overall park experience. So again, we are excited about the future of Parkland and the positive impact that these improvements will have on our community. And together, we can create a vibrant, inclusive, well-maintained park space that everyone can enjoy. So we appreciate your attention and review of this project today. And again, the team is available to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camiso. We appreciate your input. Are there any questions for Mr. Camiso? Or Ms. Hare? Any commission questions? Hearing none, thank you for the presentation. And now, thank you for your patience, Mr. Byrne. You can proceed. And as I said, you have three minutes to provide testimony. Let us know when you are ready.
I am ready.
Okay, let's go.
Yeah, contrary to the staff report, the plants in this project do not adequately conform with the recommendations in your Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide. For example, your guide says, "Take care when selecting plant cultivators." Some plants are selected for traits attractive to humans but not pollinators, such as size, color and shape. Some of these, sometimes these selections of cultivars of plants lose the traits and indicators on which the pollinators will rely. The rule of thumb for this kind of thing is that cultivars that significantly affect flower structure and/or color are the ones that are likely to alter their appeal to pollinators. That's the key point. The applicant has selected two cultivars. One, Cerise Cream Yarrow, is a perennial that has magenta flowers with white centers. In contrast, its native parent, Common Yarrow, has yellowish white flowers. There's very little resemblance. Few native pollinators are likely to recognize or feed upon cerise queen. The applicant should plant the parent, not the cultivator, as is actually usual. The other cultivar, Zembler Rododendron, is a hybrid shrub developed in Holland, whose unknown parents may not be native to North America and whose flowers may not resemble those of any native shrub. The applicant should therefore replace no resemblance with a native shrub whose height and spread are similar to those of the cultivar. I have provided the applicant with a list of native rododendrons that is various having such similar sizes. The applicant should replace those of the Zembler with one or more of these or with another native shrub that has a similar size. Now, the applicant's proposed meadow seeding mix contains multiple varieties of native milkweeds, including common milkweed, Slepia serraca, which your guide strongly recommends. However, most other milkweeds native to this region thrive only in specialized environments or are not preferred by egg-laying monarchs. I have provided the applicant with a citation to a seeding mix that the U.S. Department of Agriculture has developed for planting in Maryland environments that are similar to one in the project area. This mix has a predominant wildflower component for optimum wildlife habitat, wild pollinator habitat. The mix meets habitat and that thresholds of monarch butterflies. The larva food source is at least 1.5% and the nectar source is at least 60%. The mix contains 18 native perennials, one of which is common milkweed. The applicant should therefore replace a seeding mix with that one, which the Department of Agriculture basically recommends and suggests for this type of site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne at this time? Any questions? Hearing none, again, thank you for your input, Mr. Byrne. And this concludes public testimony. Is there a motion to approve final site development plans for the Shepherd Parkway Parkland Rehabilitation?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and.
I'm not sure who got the motion, but I'll take the second if.
Okay.
Vice Chair Hewlett got the motion.
All right. And Ms. Costa, can you confirm the motion in the second?
I certainly can. That was Vice Chair Hewlett making the motion and Commissioner Stidham providing the second.
Okay. And we will have a brief discussion. If everyone could please turn on your cameras and your mics. We'll start with Commissioner Stidham, please.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Looking at the presentation with the existing photos and then the amazing plan that the Park Service has developed, you can see that they're putting a lot of love and thought and intention into providing this space. I know this is a well-used spot by the community and that the community was well-engaged in thinking about what should be here. So we are really happy to see this move forward and look forward to the implementation.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes, I just thank Ms. Hare for her presentation. And just a shout out to the National Park Service for taking the initiative for this long, narrow spot, you know, to, and working with the community, giving meaningful adherence to the whole equity portions that we, and community engagement of the Comprehensive Plan that we've been talking about. I mean, you've worked extensively with the community and it looks, the pictures are like night and day. So big time kudos to the National Park Service.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Commissioner Green?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the presentation and all the hard work that went into the plan and look forward to seeing it carried out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. And I would like to also commend the Park Service on this project. That's a stretch of MLK as well as of Shepherd Park that's been long neglected. And so I think this is a great asset to the community and will be a vast improvement over what's there for the residents as well as, you know, GSA has the large St. Elizabeth's campus just right up the street from there. So hopefully, you know, the workers there will also come out and enjoy this. And I just really would like to commend the Park Service on the thoughtful design as well as the variety of uses that they've created the park for.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you very much, Park Service and staff. And thank you. Looking forward to the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash? Commissioner Davis?
No additional comments from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hassett?
This is Peter Warren. I just switched off with Warren, so I'm.
I see. Welcome. Welcome.
On behalf of Chairman Comer. But I did not have additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Cozart?
I want to thank the staff for the presentation and echo the comments of others who've said how important this is for the community and want to commend MPS and others on their engagement of the community around this. And with that, I don't have any other feedback or questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon?
I thank you. Associate myself with the remarks of the other commissioners. Looks like a great project. I've got no other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Mr. Byrne, I want to thank you too for your thoughtful comments that you've shared with us today and on other, on other occasions. But and big thank you to the applicant and the design team for all the work that's gone into this. I appreciated the presentation and by Ms. Hare and also the comments from Mr. Camiso. Those were very helpful. It appears that the extra outreach and coordination that resulted in this park design will make it a true asset to the community, as has been mentioned before. So I support prior comment, previous comments. And with that, we can move on if we have no further questions. We'll move to the vote, to the vote. Ms. Costa, could you confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call, please?
Yes. Again, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett with Commissioner Stidham providing the second. With that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green? Oh, Commissioner Green.
It was a silent yes.
Okay, good. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 4C, which is a request to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for Thomas Elementary School. Ms. Shipman will be making the presentation. Ms. Shipman?
Thank you. The District Department of General Services has submitted site and building plans for the modernization and expansion of the Neville H. Thomas Elementary School. The proposed project is located on district property outside the central area and does not adversely impact any identified federal interests. The school was originally built in 1946 and is located in the Mayfair neighborhood in Ward 7, adjacent to Kennelworth Park South, a National Park Service property. The school is located within a 100-year floodplain and partially within the 500-year floodplain. The proposed project includes rehabilitation of the classroom wing built in the 1940s and demolition of the 1940s café wing along the portion of the building that was constructed in the 1960s to build a new addition. The portions of the building slated for demolition have been prone to flooding and deterioration. The new addition is proposed two feet above the 500-year floodplain to reduce flooding impacts, match the existing 1940s building and align the new and existing floor levels to improve accessibility. The renderings at the bottom of the slide show views of the existing building and new addition as well as the courtyard at the rear of the building. The landscape design includes outdoor education spaces. The landscape design includes outdoor education spaces laid out as experiential rooms along a winding pathway with integrated stormwater management. A community connection pathway is also proposed along the edge of the property. This pathway will help connect the neighborhood to a proposed community gathering area as well as the parkland at the rear of the site. Based on our review, staff found that the landscape plans as proposed are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the guidance in NCPC's Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide. The commission received public comments regarding the proposed plant palette that recommend inclusion of common milkweed and removal of non-native species and cultivars. As a design landscape, the NCPC Resource Guide recommends applicants take care when selecting cultivars. And staff notes a small number of cultivars are proposed within the extensive plant palette with the rest of the plants selected at the origin species. In response to public comments, the applicant noted they plan to use all native species and they have specified certain cultivars specifically because of their enhanced characteristics, including pollinator value. Additionally, they state the cultivars they have selected will grow much smaller than their parents and will need less maintenance. With regard to planting common milkweed, the applicant states that it would crowd out other pollinated species and not be appropriate on this site due to the required maintenance. Instead, they plan to plant two other species of milkweed to create a viable monarch and other pollinator habitat. With that, staff recommends the commission approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for the proposed Neville H. Thomas Elementary School modernization. And that concludes my presentation. Representatives of the Department of General Services and the project design team are also available to respond to questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman. Do the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Shipman? Hearing any questions? No, not hearing questions. Okay, well, we will then move to public input and we do have, I believe we have testimony and it will be Mr. Bernard Byrne. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please let us know when you're ready.
Yes, I am ready.
Thank you.
As in the previous item, I do not quite agree with the staff's presentation assessment on the plants. The plants in this project do not adequately conform to the recommendations in your Pollinator Best Practice Resource Guide. For example, the plants do not include common milkweed, as I just mentioned. Your guide strongly recommends this plant because it feeds many insects, including monarch butterfly caterpillars. The applicant responded to this concern by stating that common milkweed is extremely invasive and will smother other plants that support pollinators. However, and this is the most important point, this is a misconception that many of your applicants share. We've seen this before. Common milkweed spreads by underground rhizomes. However, as I have often observed, this spread is slow and is not especially aggressive. Common milkweed does not displace many pollinator plants. Instead, invasive vines and aggressive native plants, just as zorgbait, usually crowd out common milkweed if not well-controlled. There's a question about maintenance here. Maintenance personnel only need to clear the planted area once a year outside the growing season. This will control the growth of invasive woody plants. There is no need for any other maintenance. The addition of Asclepius cereaca will not affect that. However, if desired, maintenance personnel can cut any excess milkweed to the ground in July after it has flowered. The plants will then grow back rapidly and have soft, fresh leaves when monarch butterfly reproduction reaches its peak later in the year. This benefits monarchs. As the butterflies prefer to lay eggs on soft vegetation, it also slows the milkweed spread. So the applicant was all wrong about this. The applicant proposes to plant swamp milkweed, Asclepius carnata, and butterfly milkweed, Asclepius tuberosa, instead of common milkweed. However, this won't help monarchs at all. Swamp milkweed is a poor competitor that disappears when its soil dries out. While monarchs lay few eggs on butterfly weed, the applicant plans to plant five cultivars. However, many cultivars attract humans but do not attract native pollinators, as noted in your guide. Applicants should not plant cultivars unless seeds have more disease resistance than their parents. The applicant's cultivars have no such increased resistance. The applicant should therefore replace the five with their parents or plant other species that resemble the cultivars and have similar characteristics, and there are plenty of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne? Any questions for Mr. Byrne? Hearing none, I will move on. That concludes our public testimony. And I'll start with a motion to approve preliminary and final site and building plans for Thomas Elementary School. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second by Commissioner Argo. So now let's open this up for discussion by the commission. Can everyone please turn on your cameras? And I'm going to start the round robin with Commissioner McMahon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Now, thanks to staff, their presentation, it's a good development from the schools. I've got no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham, please.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the project. I know that the district is spending a lot of time looking at the schools themselves, the physical buildings, but the attention that has been put into the schoolyard for the children is really great to see. So thank you for both the project and the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
I echo those comments right before me from Commissioner Stidham. Appreciate it, and I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewlett.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman, for the presentation and no additional comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful project and the result will be a much improved building and landscape for the users. And I think this is a terrific project and I thank you, thank the applicant for bringing this and for all the work that went into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall-Williams.
Yes, I'd like to commend DGS and the design team on the high-quality design. I think the modern addition is very complimentary to the 1940s addition without sort of being redundant. It's a really nice, modern take on what is a streamlined, modern style. The only thing that I have to say in something to consider, but I noticed, looking at the early images of the existing building, that there are a number of murals that are a part of that building. And I couldn't help but notice on the new design on the, I don't know what end it is. It looks like it's the back of where the new indoor basketball gym court is. There's a large blank brick wall, and I think that might be a great opportunity to bring back some of the muralization that is currently on the campus, have, you know, something new put there. So just for consideration, but otherwise a great project and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall-Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I think it's a great project too. I particularly am excited that we are building smart. I wish this was applied across the nation where we have things blown down and flooded and we just build back the things that will blow down again. It's like three little pigs, you know, you keep building a house you can blow over. It's going to go be blown over, over and over. But this one accommodates the water rising, which is going to come. Secondly, I wonder, just a question, whether or not there's, what the connectivity between this campus and the Kingman Island? I'm not sure what the distances are, but is there any connectivity or is it just down Bain Road?
I'd refer, yeah, I'd refer that question to the applicant, Mr. Keen.
Yes, hi, thank you.
Mr. Keen.
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm Paul Keen, Senior Project Manager with DGS. It does not have a close connection to where that island is. It is actually quite a bit of a walk. Although I have ridden my bike bike, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've always thought of Kingman Island as being a real educational opportunity.
It is.
Yeah, thank you for your time and thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Keen, and thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Davis.
Thanks for the presentation. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. And Commissioner Warren.
No comments for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Cozart.
I want to thank the staff for the presentation. Very excited about this project, important to the district. And thanks to our district colleagues for the work on this as well. No additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. And I'd just like to say that the schools, not just in DC but across the nation, are so such vital resources for our communities and for our children. I'm supportive of the project's efforts to reduce the building's deterioration and increase its resiliency for the future. And as we say in Dubuque, Iowa, the most sustainable building is usually one that's already built. So, you know, if we can continue to build on and improve existing buildings, it does save on natural resources. So just another point of view. Are there any further comments or questions? No further comments or questions. So Ms. Koster, could you please confirm the motion and the second and take the roll?
Certainly. Vice Chair Hewlett made the motion. Commissioner Argo seconded. And with that, Commissioner Cozart.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett.
Yes.
Chair Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren.
Abstain.
Thank you very much, Ms. Koster. The next agenda item, 4D, is a request to approve preliminary and final building plans for the Small Cell Guidelines Update for Standalone Poles. Ms. Free.
Yes, thank you. Can you see my screen and hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The District Department of Transportation, or DDOT, has submitted preliminary and final plans for the design of a standalone small cell pole. As the lead agency and liaison with the cell providers, DDOT worked with NCPC and other federal and local stakeholders to develop a design for the pole pursuant to the small cell guidelines that were approved in 2019. The commission has been involved with the development of the district's small cell guidelines since the initiative began in 2018. It provided comments on the draft guidelines twice before approving the guidelines in March of 2019. And last November, the commission commented favorably on the conceptual design of the standalone small cell pole. And overall, staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final design of the proposed standalone small cell pole to be installed within the district rights-of-way. As a reminder, there are multiple applications for small cell infrastructure, such as attaching to existing streetlights and utility poles or employing standalone pole installations. Small cell facilities are generally located on poles between 30 and 35 feet in height. This height is necessary to accommodate signal transmission along a street corridor. The district's guidelines state a preference for mounting small cell antennas to existing streetlights or utility poles when possible, and standalone poles are permitted when use of existing infrastructure is not sufficient or absent. But this infrastructure is not invisible. For example, we have some installations here of small cell poles that are deploying in other cities across the country. So early on, NCPC, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the District State Historic Preservation Office realized that the design of this infrastructure must be done as minimally as possible to reduce impacts to significant view sheds in the district, and the design needs to be well-coordinated and reviewed. During the concept review, the commission commented favorably on the proposed pole, the design, which has a tall, slim profile, which we see here. The proposed pole, as seen on the left, has a tapered post, decorative transition shroud, and all equipment is concealed within the base. The different carrier antennas will be mounted at the top of the pole, as we see here in the right three images. The only change to the design since the concept review is the addition of a 3/8 of an inch thick base shoe at the bottom of the base. This was added in response to the Commission of Fine Arts comments. And with this addition, the CFA approved the final design of the pole at its March 2024 commission meeting. The previous concept plan submission included photo simulations that placed the proposed standalone pole within the district's streetscape at various locations. While the photo simulations provided some context, the commission requested a full-scale prototype fixture be installed within the federal core interest area as it is critically important for stakeholders and the public to understand how the standalone poles will fit within the streetscape, given their scale and the potential distribution of poles across the district. The commission also requested that the prototype be used to evaluate the pole color, considering both gray and black. However, the applicant identified several practical challenges with the production process, materiality, and timing associated with the construction of a full-size solution as an alternative solution to the prototype that studies the proposed small cell pole within the context of the district's streetscapes. And staff finds the provided video simulation, which uses augmented reality to locate the proposed small cell poles within the streetscape is an effective tool for understanding the scale and visual impacts of the poles and relationship to existing streetscape elements and important federal resources. So I will now, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, here we go. Staff requested that the video simulation occur on F Street directly in front of the Smithsonian American Art Museum and Portrait Gallery and 8th Street between the museum and the Navy Memorial. This location includes five poles identified in the federal core interest area map, which was developed by staff and included in the guidelines to identify acceptable small cell facility locations adjacent to federal property. Staff picked this location in particular for the video simulation as it provides context of the poles installed in front of a significant federal building, that being the American Art Museum and Portrait Gallery, and demonstrates the impact of the poles on the view shed between the American Art Museum and the Navy Memorial. So we will now play the video simulation, which is about one and a half minutes long. Okay, I have just a few more slides here before we conclude. Here we have some still images from the simulation of the poles located at nodes 1 through 3, as seen in the video. As we have here, on F Street, the small cell pole color is modeled to match the gray streetlights. And on 8th Street, the small cell pole color is modeled in black to match the black streetlights. To reinforce consistency within the streetscapes and minimize the appearance of the poles, staff supports installing gray-colored small cell poles on streets where the existing streetlights are predominantly gray and black-colored poles where the existing streetlights are predominantly black. And ultimately, the district's Public Space Committee will determine the color of the poles. Here we have additional still shots of the poles at nodes 4 and 5. In the view on the left, looking up 8th Street from the Navy Memorial. Eighth Street from the Navy Memorial, looking towards the American Art Museum, you only see node five here, where node four is located, is concealed here behind the tree canopy on the right. And overall, staff finds the proposed small cell pole design is appropriate within the context of the locations identified on the federal court interest area map due to its simple, slender design, scale, and minimal base, which allows the pole to blend into the streetscape. So again, before I conclude, I'd like to remind the commission that the submission is the culmination of nearly six years of work and coordination between DDOT, the wireless carriers, and the review agencies and other stakeholders to create a design for the small cell poles that is integrated with the streetscapes of the national, of the national capital. And staff commends the applicant for the extent of coordination with stakeholders and the responsiveness to feedback received in the development of the design. So the executive director's recommendations are listed here, and they have been incorporated into my presentation. Myself and several others from DDOT and and the wireless carriers are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Free, very much. That was a great presentation and comprehensive. Do the commissioners have any questions at this time for Ms. Free or for any of her associated professionals? Yes, Commissioner Stidham?
I too.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, and I realize this is many, many, many years of work, not just on the pole design itself, but on the guidelines that got you even to this point. Um, it's hard for me to think about the pole without thinking about is this one carrier? Does this accommodate more than one carrier? To think about what ultimately will be on top of that pole? Um, so can you talk a little bit about that and talk a little bit also about where these are implemented? Is this a, is ju- is this just a pole, or is there utility boxes and other things associated with the pole? I'm just trying to put that pole in context with whatever else might be needed.
Sure, yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, the intent is that each individual pole will accommodate one carrier's uh, equipment or antenna. So uh, one pole may be for T-Mobile, one pole may be for AT&amp;T, and one pole may be for Verizon equipment. So the equipment at the top of the poles may vary uh based on the provider. Um, and it's also my understanding with regard to additional um cabinetry or equipment boxes that you referenced that there will not be any of that infrastructure outside of the pole itself, that the pole has been designed to accommodate all of that equipment within the base of the pole.
Okay, great. So um, it so if it's one carrier, we're talking, and I know the array will be different, right? But we're talking just one array on top of that pole because it's just one carrier, basically.
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham, and Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I uh have kind of a follow-up to that. Uh, the, we, the sharing issue came up before, and I know this has been around for a long time. The concern I have is, you know, let's suppose you want T-Mobile, and you want Verizon, and you want another carrier, maybe four or five others, who knows how many. To get their service, are you gonna have to have multiple poles in an area to handle those? And that's kind of complicated, for example, and uh, so I think you can understand, and that's been part of the concern. And I'm not sure it's resolvable, but there was a hope that you could get a pole with having more than one carrier. So I guess my question is, you've answered it, it's not gonna handle more than one carrier, right?
That's correct.
So therefore, if you want multiple service from multiple carriers, that may require you to have multiple poles in the same block. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I understand the, the question. Uh, so we, early on in the design process, we collectively looked at co-locating multiple carriers on one pole. Um, that that approach ultimately did not come through to fruition because accommodating multiple carriers on a single pole increases the size of the pole pretty substantially, including the base. Um, so as, as part of the working group, uh, it was, it was determined that the best approach would be to keep this pole as minimal as possible uh in terms of its appearance and to use one carrier per pole um uh would accomplish that. Um, the federal core uh interest area map uh does uh locate, does provide purposeable locations for these poles and the number of poles per block face. So there, if, if you did want uh cell coverage from multiple carriers uh on a certain block, you, there uh in essence would need to be multiple poles, but there are limitations on the number of poles per block face that would be permitted based on the guidelines.
Okay, so this is pretty tricky in terms of marketing, et cetera, et cetera. I think everybody probably understands that. So we have a pole with one carrier, but we could have multiple poles. So you got more poles and less carriers per pole. Uh, the other, other question I had is the the spacing, even for one carrier, how much spacing does, is gonna be required? Is it per block, or do you have a sense for that, a sense of that?
Uh, the spacing is in the guidelines. I, I do not have that, that handy. I can look it up um in, in a moment. Um, but I, it works out to be, I believe, about uh two poles, two or three poles per block face, and that's counting the, the both sides of the block.
Okay, so therefore, if you have two carriers, you got double that, multiply, right? Three carriers, times that. Uh, it also, is the fiber that they're gonna use, fiber optics, is that cabling already available in the grant there, or will it have to be brought in?
Uh, that is a good question for the, that I would refer to the applicant. I believe that there are some fiber upgrades that are necessary as part of this effort. But I would refer that to the, the applicant to confirm.
Yeah.
And I see Ashley Greenspan um with Crown Castle has her hand raised. I think she can address that question.
Yes, I wanted to speak to the other question as well about um there being multiple poles on a single block. The um existing guidelines, do you set out them? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Commissioner Dixon, can you hear? Commissioner Dixon, you're frozen.
Um, but just for um to, to complete the, the response. So the existing small cell guidelines do lay out the maximum number of allowable poles on a block face in the federal court interest area that is first come, first served. So beyond what is allowed, um, there wouldn't be any additional poles. Um, as far as bringing fiber to each of these locations, yes, there would be underground construction in order to bring fiber to each of the locations.
So you're gonna have that fiber, and each pole will have to have its own fiber connectivity, correct?
Each location will need to utilize fiber, either what's existing or to bring it in.
We, we were losing you a little bit. I guess we don't have enough poles.
I think she said they would have to bring in fiber to each of the poles, Commissioner Dixon, yes. Uh, either using existing lines or they would have to bring in new uh fiber. So I don't know if you could hear me, Commissioner Dixon, but you're, it appears as though you're frozen again. Um, I'm gonna let Commissioner Green ask his question of the presenters.
Thank you very much. Uh, I had two questions. The first is, what is the maximum number of poles allowed per block face? And we can just answer that, and then I'll go to the next question.
All right, it does vary. Uh, that is part of the guidelines, and I would just need a couple of moments to, to pull that up and to respond to that question. So while um I do that, you can uh
Okay.
go ahead and ask your, your other question.
And the second question comes, so if, if, if it's one, one pole per carrier, if in the future, let's say eight years, you know, eight, ten years down the road, the five, whatever, the carrier decides to replace the equipment on the pole, does that come back for review? Or can the carrier attach whatever equipment they see fit at that point?
Uh, we are not reviewing the equipment itself, so we would not review a, a change to the equipment. Um, unless the, I, I believe if the district uh were to flag this as a substantial change in the size of the equipment, I think that would be um, that would warrant kind of reconvening this working group to, to take a look at that.
That's obviously where my question was going. You know, what would prevent in the future from getting, you know, getting a lot of equipment jammed on top of the pole? And we go from a fairly slender pole to one that's, you know, pretty laden with equipment and potentially multiples per block face.
Right. Yes, I, if, if there was a substantial change to the, the sizing of the equipment, um, I would anticipate even if, if that were to happen, that, that may warrant a, a change to the, the design of the pole to support that equipment. So I think that would be um, it would be necessary to reconvene the um, the working group at that point.
And Stephanie, if I could just add to your response, um, for the existing small cell guidelines, do you have a maximum allowable envelope for the antennas that are allowed to be attached to these? So that has been um addressed by the existing guidelines, and anything beyond that would need to go um back for additional um review by the various agencies?
Commissioner, Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I uh, I, I think I'm, I may have frozen. Maybe I don't have enough poles near me here at my, my location, I don't know. But the other, the fiber optics has got to be laid, in other words, for these things. That means that's a, a major, that's some construction required. Uh, a- also, the uh uh in the communities, are these, are we, has this already been, I know we're looking at the downtown, our, our, our commercial area of downtown, but the same requirements will exist in the communities, is that correct?
Yes, that's right. I, I, um, the same design, the same pole will be used for uh the federal court interest area as well as other areas of the district and the communities. And I wanted to uh address your question, Commissioner Dixon, as well as uh Commissioner Greens about the uh number of poles per block face. I did pull up the guidelines. Um, so um, within the federal court interest area, uh, it's based on the length of the block face. So on a block face that measures um up to a hundred and fifty feet in length, there would be one small cell um permitted. Um, it stays at one uh small cell facility permitted until the block length increases to a range of four hundred and fifty one feet to six hundred feet, and then there would be two permitted. And um, anything over that amount would still be uh restricted to a maximum of two small self-facilities. So we're looking at one or two per block face.
Yeah, I know this is a very
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank, do, were you not finished, Commissioner Green or Dixon?
No, I really, uh, I think my questions are uh, really have been answered, but it leaves me with a lot of trouble. Uh, because I think that there's gonna have to, how do we allocate uh effectively and fairly to different carriers? Uh, uh, access to poles and space. And with all this fiber work, you know, we, it's funny. We all got excited about having cell phones and no line, wireless, no, no, no lines. Now we got all these poles coming in, so it's getting to be a little bit, I think, we need, need, need to really be thoughtful about this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. I, I know Kelsey Bridges um uh is waiting to ask a question. I said her hand up, so please go forward.
Hi, I feel like I've been uh slow. Everyone is answering uh the questions, but I'm here representing uh the district with the District Department of Transportation. So I just wanted to kind of echo some of the things I've heard that Stephanie and both Ash, um, both Stephanie and Ashley have said um about the guidelines. Yes, they do have um spacing requirements that look at blocks and block faces, meaning like both sides of the street, the length of the block. Those are things that are in the guidelines. Um, whereas for whether it's a standalone pole or for any type of small cell infrastructure that can be attached to light poles, for example, um, and the uh it is first come, first served basis, which is one of the reasons we have been working with all of the carriers to move forward and advance this design, so that we're making sure that, you know, everyone is participating in this effort as we move forward with the pole and that they are um able to have their equipment connect and work within this uh, the pole framework so that it uh for whenever folks are ready to apply, that it can work for every carrier.
Thank you for that additional input. Are there any further questions for um our expert panel or our staff? No, hearing no further questions. I don't see any other hands raised. I think I think that answered a little bit more of your question, Commissioner Dixon. Uh, the challenge that carriers will have is going to be a first come, first serve um challenge uh for them.
Well, it's gonna also be a challenge to us users, because if you've committed to a service like, that's one of them, I donate getting the lotion. Then if your block doesn't have that pole, then you don't have any service. And uh, and so forth and so on. So it's a it's got, in the end, it's the user, you know. But I, I think everybody, I think people understand what I'm, I think what I'm getting at, and uh, it's complicated.
Thank you, that's that is true, and I see three more hands up. So um, I'll start with Mr. Matthew Markou.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, my name's Matthew Markou. I'm the Chief of Staff at the District Department of Transportation. And in a past life, five years ago, I was the Chair of the Public Space Committee when the guidelines were being developed and formally adopted. Uh, Mr. Dixon, to the point you're making about um, if there isn't a carrier along the block, you won't get service. Uh, that's not quite how these systems work. They are networks, so they actually cover much broader areas than just a single block from a single pole. So don't uh, it won't um pro, it won't limit service. It just identifies that they'll have to put a pole on a different block if that block is specifically taken that they're looking for. So that was covered, Mr. Dixon, and that was discussed with all of the the carriers at the time that the guidelines were being developed. It was an important component of the spacing, and the spacing is something that works for all of the carriers.
Thank you, Mr. Markou. Um, I see, I see um staffers and Ms. Um, Diane Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Chair Goodman. Um, and Mr. Markou actually talked a little bit about what I wanted to say, but I also wanted to point out that when um, and the NCPC Commission approved the federal, um, the small-scale map um and the federal interest area, um, we were a little bit conservative. We recognize, you know, we didn't want this to be a free-for-all. We were very nervous about poles showing up everywhere. And I think we all recognized, um, working with D, DDOT and the carriers, that this was gonna be our first effort. Um, we might have to, you know, look at it again in the future, but this would get us started. So um, that was just, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Sullivan. And I see Commissioner Stidham has her hand up. Commissioner Stidham?
Thank you, Chair. Just um, one more question um for Ms. Bridges. So at a minimum, we're talking like each block face, right? So at a minimum on the smallest block, there would be four per block if you were thinking about a rectangle, a, a square block, right? So we're talking about on all sides of that block, there could be a minimum of one pole per block face. Correct?
Yes, so um, if you're thinking about it in context, um, a block is two block faces, so like each side of the street. So when you're looking at, yeah. I believe that's what you said.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. That, that's all I heard, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. I think that's all. I do not see any hands up. Please speak up if, if you have an additional question, but if we have no further questions, uh, then there is a motion, um, or we will need a motion uh to approve the preliminary and final building plans for the small cell guidelines update for standalone poles. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
A second.
I think that was Commissioner Stidham?
No, it's Argo.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm doing my best. Thank you very much. Commissioner Argo seconded it. Now we'll open up this um topic for discussion. That was our question period. Now, um, we will begin uh with deliberations with Vice Chair Green, please.
Uh, my questions were answered in the um, uh, in the discussion with the applicants. I, I have no additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, then we will move to Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
No additional questions. I um share the concern of the other commissioners about a proliferation of poles, and I hope one day the technology will allow for light poles and small cell and all that to be um integrated, but we're not there right now, so I suppose they've done as good a job as they can to make them as unobtrusive as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Uh, Commissioner Dixon?
Epstein.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Uh, no comments from me. Thank you.
Okay, I think I see Commissioner Warren and Commissioner Hassett on. Um, are you both repre- representing Congressman Commerce Office, or who's the voting member here? Or did Commissioner Warren get off? No?
I think, yes, I think he left.
Okay, very good. Then Commissioner Hassett, thank you.
Yes, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart.
Uh, thanks to the staff for the presentation and the many years of ongoing coordination uh around this. Um, and no further questions from me.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon?
Well, I was reading an article in the paper the other day about uh six feet coming, but I
Well, I was reading Oracle in the paper the other day about, uh, six feet coming, but I guess that'll be a discussion, different day. Appreciate the work of the staff and the applicants for, you know, what's a hard project to do that's gonna avoid visual clutter, I think, downtown. I think this will go a long way towards doing that. Why wait for that day? I have no other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
Uh, I want to congratulate the staff and the, the working group that's been working on this for so long. This is not easy. Um, for many reasons, not easy because of the constantly changing technology. It changes your ability to what are you housing sort of thing. Um, and the constantly, um, also, um, the, the clutter of, of polls and, um, I've spent a lot of time looking at polls in many different cities, and I think that this is a, a very good job at trying to accommodate the needs of the technology in a way that tends to blend. I don't think you could have gotten it any slimmer. Um, and you have gotten it slimmer than where you started. So really, that's, uh, a, a lot of words to say, uh, thank you for your efforts, um, and nice job.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
Yes, um, the, I, I think to, to sort of thread some of these comments together, the, um, the challenge is to, to, to marry the infrastructure with the new demands for technology, I think is going to continue to confront us. So I, you know, I appreciate, um, all the work that's been done to bring this, um, to bring this forward and all the attention paid um, to the, to the question of design, uh, especially as it impacts the environment. So, um, good job. This is gonna, we're, we're gonna see this again in, in, in furious considerations, I have a feeling. So it's good to spend some time on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. And, uh, Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yeah, um, I appreciate the concerns as well. And technology evolves so quickly when we think I big, you know, VCRs and Betamaxs and things like that, then the CDs and you know, the all of thing of the past. Um, apparent, we need these now, and I think I agree with Commissioner Stidham that this is a good design for now as compared to other jurisdictions. Few years from now, it may be obsolete, but, but what do you do now? So uh, I just think it's ever-changing, ever-evolving, and I think this is a good plan for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. And I would too like to thank the District Department of Transportation and the wireless carriers for their responsiveness to uh, stakeholder feedback and their dedication to addressing, um, the comments from the commission in the past and to others involved in the process. I think it's a very difficult task coming from a city that is still grappling with this. Perhaps the NCPC can be a another, um, thought leader in this area, and, and thought leading includes all the concerns for the future because it's ever-expanding. But the technology gap is real and there has to be, um, you know, there has to be access to technology and uh, even though it is evolving, I think that this work that's been done over the past six years is significant and it, and as, um, Commissioner Stidham said, that it is narrower, it is, it is, you worked really hard to make this the best it can be for now. And, and knowing that, uh, we just want to say how much we appreciate uh, the work that you've done to minimally impact the surrounding context. That includes so many important assets in our nation's capital. So, um, with that, I'd just like to say, are there any further questions? Um, and if not, I want to make one edit that, um, uh, it was recognized earlier. Um, this is agenda item four E, not four D, and I just want the record to correct that. That was my error. And, um, um, that has become known to me. So I want to correct that and move on then, and is, with no further comments or questions on this topic, um, Ms. Costa, would you like to confirm the motion in the second and take the roll?
Certainly. Uh, Vice Chair Hewlett made the motion and Commissioner Argo seconded. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm gonna abstain, uh, not because I don't appreciate the work that's done and understand the complications, but I, I think, uh, we're getting technology is, I just, I'm gonna abstain at this point. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. The motion has carried. And so moving on, our last item, uh, that we will have is an information presentation on the Little Falls Parkway improvements in Montgomery County, Maryland. This item was moved over from our main meeting and the presentation will be made by our staff, Mr. Wile. Um, and Mr. Wile, if you'd like to begin, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I will share my screen. Just let me know when you see that.
Yes, you're up.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, Madam, uh, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. Today I am joined by Andrew Sai from the Montgomery County Parks Department, which is the applicant for a project that will likely become, uh, come before our commission for review and approval this September as required under the Capper-Crampton Act. As part of today's presentation, we will provide you with an overview of the project, describe NCPC's specific review role. And as there is some local community concern related to the project, which is a series of proposed changes to a parkway in Montgomery County, we hope to address any questions that you all may have in advance of our future commission meeting. So here's the project area, a point four mile section of Little Falls Parkway in Bethesda, Maryland, between just north of Arlington Road and Dorset Avenue, shown here in red. In total, the parkway is approximately one and a half miles long, extending between Bradley Boulevard in the north and Massachusetts Avenue in the south. The par- parkway was originally constructed in the nineteen fifties with the purpose of providing access to Little Falls Stream Valley Park and nearby residential communities. Here's a satellite view of the project area, which shows a number of different adjacent land uses, including forested Stream Valley Parkland, uh, public community pool, surface parking for Little Falls Park visitors, and several nearby residential neighborhoods. Here is a key feature within the project area, the Capital Crescent Trail, which is a popular hard surface shared use trail extending between Bethesda, Maryland and Georgetown and Washington DC. The trail crosses Little Falls Parkway, and this was the catalyst for a series of proposed pedestrian and bicycle safety and mobility improvements by the Montgomery County Parks Department in the area. So as background, the Capper-Crampton Act established a regional network of parks within Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, and these lands were set aside for stormwater management, environmental protection, and recreational purposes. The Act appropriated federal funding to the state with which to acquire this land, and NCPC was provided with an oversight responsibility for future park development. And this includes Little Falls Stream Valley Park where the project site is located. So it's important to clarify that NCPC does not own the park property, nor do we manage the property, which is under the oversight of the Montgomery County Parks Department. Rather, NCPC has a very defined review role, which is to certify the compatibility of all permanent development as appropriate as a park use or not. As noted here, previous commission reviews within these parks have dealt with, uh, water quality and stormwater management-related projects, projects that improve access to and/or within these parks, and constructing new playgrounds and other recreational facilities. Since our commission has an approval role under the Capper-Crampton Act and a related nineteen thirty-one basic agreement, we are required to review the project's potential environmental impacts per the National Environmental Protection Act, or NEPA, and the National Historic Preservation Act. So we are currently in the process of preparing an environmental assessment in coordination with the Montgomery County Parks Department as the project owner, and I will describe our ongoing study in more detail towards the end of the presentation. But first, I would like to introduce Mr. Andrew Sai, who is the manager of the project, so that he can walk you through the project's history, its purpose, and detail their proposed, uh, parkway design changes. And just so you know, the Montgomery, uh, Parks Department is part of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, which is a bi-county agency established in nineteen twenty-seven with a focus on promoting physical activity, social connectivity, and environmental, uh, stewardship within Montgomery and Prince George's Counties in Maryland. So with that, I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Sai.
Uh, thank you very much, Mike. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Chair Goodman, uh, my name is Andrew Sai, and I'm an engineer with Montgomery County Parks. Also, on this meeting today with me is my colleague Kyle Lucas. He's our Montgomery Parks Trails Planner. Uh, thank you for having us, and we're happy to give a brief background and history of the Little Falls Parkway project. Next slide, please. Little Falls Parkway has historically had a four-lane cross-section with two drivelines southbound and two drivelines northbound, separated by a wide grass median. Between Arlington Road and Hillendale Road, as Mike mentioned earlier, the Capital Crescent Trail crosses the parkway. Uh, the Capital Crescent Trail is a nineties rail trail project. It's a former branch of the BNO railroad. Um, it's the most popular shared use trail in Montgomery County, running from Georgetown and Washington DC to Bethesda, where it subsequently connects to the Georgetown Branch Trail. During peak, peak seasons, the Capital Crescent Trail has over five thousand users a day, uh, with peaks of over four hundred users an hour. The crossing of the Capital Crescent Trail at the parkway has historically been the site of frequent conflicts between trail users and drivers, worsened by the previous multiple lane threat configuration afforded by having two drivelines in each direction, as well as the higher speeds allowed by that type of configuration. Next slide, please. This project has a multi-year history. I'm gonna attempt to summarize it as best I can very briefly. Um, Montgomery County was the first county in the United States to adopt Division Zero Action Plan to reduce and eliminate traffic deaths and, and fatalities, uh, and, and serious injuries. In two thousand and seventeen, following a bicycle fatality at the crossing, we implemented a interim vision, Vision Zero-based road diet at the Capital Crescent Trail Crossing, using flex posts and chains as well as signage and pavement markings to close one driveline in each direction, in effect turning a four-lane parkway into a two-lane parkway. We also lowered the speed limit from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Subsequent study showed that there was a significant reduction in crashes at the crossing that continues on to this day. In two thousand and sixteen, which was the full year before we implemented interim road diet, there were six recorded crashes at the crossing, including one fatality. In the past four years combined, since two thousand and twenty, there have been zero recorded crashes. With the success, success of the road diet and improving safety, we made a recommendation to the planning board in two thousand and nineteen to convert the parkway to a permanent two-lane roadway. At the time, the board did not approve that recommendation, but they did allow the interim road diet to remain in place indefinitely. In two thousand and twenty, we started a program during the pandemic called Open Parkways, where we shut down park roads throughout the county on the weekends, completely to vehicles, and opened them up to recreational use. Thousands of users a weekend walked, ran, skated, and biked on park roads, including Little Falls Parkway, Beach Drive, and Sligo Creek Parkway in Montgomery County, similar to the program in DC of the, similar to the closure of Beach Drive Northwest in Rock Creek Park in Washington DC. However, there was unintended side effect of the closure along Little Falls Parkway to cars during the weekends. It increased cut-through traffic on adjacent neighborhood streets. In two thousand and twenty-two, we worked with Montgomery County Department of Transportation to implement a pilot project. We shifted all vehicle traffic into the two existing northbound lanes of the parkway and kept the southbound lanes open for recreational use, also twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. This allowed the parkway to be constantly open for vehicle use, but also allowed recreational use in the two remaining closed off lanes. Subsequent traffic study showed that the pilot project eliminated cut-through traffic in the residential neighborhoods around the, around the area while still maintaining adequate levels of service for vehicle traffic. And we also projected that a two-lane roadway configuration had more than sufficient capacity for future estimated traffic growth in the overall area. In two thousand and twenty-three, we recommended a permanent two-lane configuration for the parkway, uh, between Arlington Road and Dorset Avenue to the Montgomery County Planning Board, and they approved it in April of two thousand and twenty-three. After planning board approval, the Montgomery County Council's Planning, Housing, and Parks Committee reviewed the proposed site plan and requested revisions before referring the project to the full county council for review and approval in January of two thousand and twenty-four. The site plan was approved unanimously, and this is the site plan which I'll go over in the next few slides, and that we have referred to NCPC for review per Capper-Crampton requirements. Next slide, please. This plan shows the full project extent, and we'll zoom in on the next couple of slides, but just to get the lay of the land, the left side of the plan is, is the northern terminus of the project at Little Falls Parkway and Arlington Road. The right side is the southern terminus of the project at Little Falls Parkway and Dorset Avenue. A couple landmarks to point out are the Bethesda Pool at the intersection of Hillendale Road and Little Falls Parkway, and the Capital Crescent Trail, which is highlighted in orange on the plan. As you can see, most of the adjacent park parcel is undeveloped Stream Valley Parkland. And, next slide, please. Zooming in between Arlington Road and Hillendale Road, the roadway is being reconfigured to one driveline in each direction, separated by existing grass median as seen in the cross-section to your right. A protected shared-use path will be provided along the southbound driveline, connecting the existing sidewalk north of Arlington Road to the Capital Crescent Trail and then on to Hillendale Road. Vision Zero-based intersection improvements are proposed at Arlington Road and Hillendale, or I'm sorry, Arlington Road and Hillendale Road, both intersections, including improved accessible concrete landings, reduced curb radii, and additional bicycle connectivity. The existing race crosswalk and median refuge at the Capital Crescent Trail Crossing itself will remain. Unused pavement along this segment of the project will be removed, which will provide significant environmental benefits in a sensitive ecological area. Next slide, please. Between Hillendale Road and Dorset Avenue, the road is also one driveline in each direction, separate by the existing grass median. The county council-approved site plan requires keeping in pla- keeping in place all existing pavement along this segment. Low-profile separators will be installed to close off the unused drivelines, but still allow for emergency vehicle access and operations. South of Hillendale Road, the protected shared-use path becomes a buffered bike lane connecting to Dorset Avenue and allowing bicycles to continue on to the Little Falls Trail, as well as south to River Road and eventually Massachusetts Avenue. Vision Zero-based intersection improvements, including accessible landing pads and reducing the crosswalk distances, will also be implemented at the intersection of Little Falls Parkway and Dorset Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. And I will turn it back to Mike. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Uh, so as I previously noted, uh, our commission does have both, uh, a NEPA and Section one oh six responsibility for the project. Uh, and these studies are intended to inform the commission's decision rather than to determine a particular review outcome, approval, or disapproval by the commission. The EA will have, uh, two different alternatives, a no, no-action alternative, which consists of the original four-lane pre-road diet parkway configuration, and this is for comparison purposes only as required under NEPA. And the action alternative will consist of the proposed parkway changes, uh, that, uh, Andrew just described to you, as referred to NCPC by the Montgomery County Parks Department and endorsed by the Montgomery County Council. As part of our outreach process for the project, NCPC staff hosted a two-hour virtual public meeting in the, uh, during the evening of March twelfth to describe our review process under the Capper-Crampton Act, under NEPA and Section one oh six, to answer questions and to invite the public to comment on the content of the environmental assessment. In general, although the project does have some supporters, we have also heard concerns about existing traffic congestion along the parkway and how the project would impact parkway travel, as well as the project's potential to impact community facilities, trail users, and how the Parks Department can better maintain and operate the parkway. And we have heard these comments both through our scoping process and in person during a previous visit to the project site. So here's the current, uh, project review schedule at this point. NCPC will post the project EA to our website, uh, for a thirty-day public comment period starting, uh, this month in June. And then once that concludes, we will review all public comments that we receive and incorporate that information into our official staff recommendations and comments for future consideration by the commission, uh, which is anticipated for, um, uh, review in September. As part of our outreach process, NCPC has set up a project-specific page. As part of our outreach process, NCPC has set up a project-specific page, uh, with various, um, oop, sorry, I jumped ahead. NCPC has set up a project-specific page with various useful background, uh, resources, such as information on the Capra Krampson Act, NIPA, Section one oh six, and NCPC's review process. And our page also links to the Parks Department, um, uh, Parks Department project site, which has a detailed project history and previous county council reviews prior to the Parks Department referral to NCPC. And before I wrap up today, I wanted to leave you with several key takeaways. First, I would like to reiterate that NCPC has a specific review role under the Capra Krampson Act for the project and its related nineteen thirty-one Basic Agreement, and this is to review the project's compatibility as a park use. Second, our commission is only considering a single action alternative, which consists of the proposed parkway changes that were referred to us by the Montgomery County Parks Department and endorsed by the county council in our environmental assessment. And finally, the community may continue to engage the Parks Department as they work to develop and refine their plans in the future. And should the Parks Department continue to make minor operational changes to the parkway in the future, such as pavement restriping, signal timings, and potential signage changes, then these would not have to be reviewed by our commission under the Capra Krampson Act. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Uh, Mr. Sai, Matthew Fliss, our senior planner, and Kyle Lucas and I, we are all, uh, now available for any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. While. I appreciate that very helpful presentation as we learn about this project that's upcoming on future agenda. Does anyone have any commissioners have questions for Mr. While, Mr. Sai, or Mr. Lucas? Please ask them now if you do. No questions? Okay, hearing no questions, then I would, will start this, this, I'm sorry, this.
Sorry, Chair, it's informational. I'll ask a couple of questions. I guess I'll take Peter May's place as the, uh, okay, cyclist for the group, but, uh, Mr. Sai, thanks. Good presentation, uh, generally a good proposal. A couple of questions I have with the cyclist lines is, hey, have you coordinated with some of the cyclist groups as part of the county's efforts? Uh, and let me ask a couple of questions. You can address them both at once, because I take a look at this, and I'm just wondering about the transition, uh, from, uh, the, um, psychopath, uh, at each end back to regular traffic, you know, coming up Little Falls Parkway hadn't, you know, uh, passed Arlington Bull Road. How are you going to get back onto something that's, you know, crossing two lanes of traffic and kind of the same thing on the other end? Um, so I think those are, those are my two questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Uh, Mike, would it be possible to bring up the, um, overall site plan again? Uh, but the first part of the question regarding coordination with cycle groups, uh, certainly, um, we have reached out to WABA, uh, throughout the history of this project, as well as other, um, interested groups in the area. The Montgomery County has a, um, a committee put together by various, um, government personnel, DOT personnel, state highway, police, uh, parks. Um, we, we have presented this project to them and received sort of their input and, um, and, and their, their comments from revealing, uh, what we're proposing to do. I know that, um, WABA and other bicycle and trail advocacy groups, um, are also aware of the project. They've attended our meetings and, um, that they, uh, support the project as well. Um, regarding the bicycle connectivity, um, so there's a, going up, I guess, to the north side first, um, there's a connection, there's an existing sidewalk that runs north to south, sort of from where Bradley Boulevard, which is, uh, even further north off this page. There's an existing sidewalk along Glenbrook Road. It ends right now, roughly just to the north of the entrance to that, uh, that parking lot over there. Uh, we're posing to tie in there. Uh, that segment between that connection all the way down to Hillendale Road, we're, we're gonna make that a shared-use path that's protected from the adjacent traffic via a, an actual traffic barrier. Um, and what that allows us to do is it connects the Capital Crescent Trail, uh, crossing at Little Falls Parkway all the way north to the communities in that area. It also allows the connection to Hillendale Road. Um, at the intersections of Hillendale Road, Arlington Road, uh, both those intersections, you can see sort of the green lines. The intention of those green lines is, is a bicycle, um, a, a dedicated bicycle crossing path. Uh, so that's gonna be coordinated with the crossing signals, and it's gonna allow bicycle traffic that utilizes Arlington Road and Hillendale Road, which are Montgomery County DOT roadways, but, um, if you're on a bike and you're traveling south on Arlington or on Hillendale, and you want to access either the Capital Crescent Trail or Little Falls Parkway, um, by providing some dedicated crossing infrastructure for bicycles, our goal is to make that, that connection a little bit safer, a little bit quicker, a little bit more accessible, um, but not only for, for cyclists, but for pedestrians crossing as well. Um, and then, as you mentioned, and south of Hillendale Road, um, we have to maintain the existing pavement, and for that reason, we we want to minimize the infrastructure that we're installing along this segment, so we are using the low-profile separators. Um, I know that's something, um, that has been utilized on some bike lanes in the past, including in Washington DC with, with sort of the bicycle, the, um, the, the, the separators and flex post configuration. Um, but from Hillendale south to Dorset, it's, it becomes a buffered bike lane. Uh, because we can't provide a traffic barrier there, it's, the intention there is that, um, mostly cyclists, uh, will be utilizing that. Uh, and so cyclists utilize that connection, they can access Dorset Avenue. At the intersection of Dorset Avenue and, and Little Falls Parkway, we're proposing similar, um, connection improvements, and there's, there are several ways to go at that intersection. We can cross the road there and then go to the Little Falls Trail, which is highlighted on the plan. Um, the Little Falls Trail then allows the connection all the way up, um, to the east toward Wisconsin Avenue, Maryland three fifty-five, or bicycle traffic continues south on Little Falls Parkway, and then eventually access River Road, uh, at River Road and uh, Little Falls Parkway, there's a signalized crossing, which then allows, um, cyclists to cross over down Massachusetts, or down Little Falls Parkway all the way to Massachusetts. Um, but I shouldn't, should note that this project does end at Dorset Avenue, so we're not providing any additional, um, dedicated bicycle infrastructure south of Dorset Avenue.
Okay, do you anticipate that the cycle track is going to be used by pedestrians?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was disconnected there for a second.
Yeah, listen to your comments. Do you anticipate the cycle track is going to be used by pedestrians?
Ideally, we would not want pedestrians to utilize the cycle track south of Hillendale Road. And Kyle, if, if you want to chime in with a little bit more information on that.
Sure, just, uh, starting my video up here. Yeah, so, um, in our original design plans, um, we had all the traffic on one side of the road, which would allow us to create, you know, essentially a, 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 a shared-use path that had a, a grass buffer between the vehicles. With, with this configuration that the, the county council, um, recommended that we're moving forward with, we've got one lane on each side of the median. And in order to not have to add, um, several operational bays for, for emergency, um, response access, this, um, we're using the low-profile separators for, for much of the, the length. And because of the, the low-profile separators, um, where, it, it's more of a buffered bike lane or separated bike lane as opposed to a, a true shared-use path. So between the, um, Capitol Crescent Trail and the existing trail on the north end, that would be considered a shared-use path and would have, uh, a full buffer, and then the rest of the segment would be just the, the low-profile separators. And because of that, um, you know, the potential for, say, a child or a dog or something to move into the lane of traffic, um, we, we don't feel as confident in, in, in talking about that as a shared-use path, so, um, it's, uh, it's a portion of shared-use path, and then it's, it's a separated bike lane. So we, we, we do anticipate that there's likely going to be some that would use it, just as right now, um, you know, when I've been out there, I've seen people walking along the, the travel lane itself. So it's, it'll be hard to, to fully prevent that. Um, but in any case, it will be buffered. Um, so if people do choose to walk there, it will at least be a little bit safer than the existing condition.
Okay, I'm just worried about conflict between pedestrians and motorized vehicles, but I'm also concerned with just a ten-foot wide, wide pathway. Show it, uh, two, two ways, conflict between bicyclists and pedestrians, so, and it just becomes more and more crowded, so, uh, thank you.
Yep.
Chair Goodman, that, that prompted a question for me, actually.
Yes, Commissioner Stidham.
Has the, I, I can see that once this is completed, it would be very attractive for people to also want to walk here. So has there been considerations made for, um, an adjacent sidewalk? Or maybe there is an adjacent sidewalk, and I can't see it in this image. Um, have you considered? I, I think that you're going to draw pedestrian use here. Um, so what considerations have you made for that potential?
Yeah, so, um, I, I think to answer that question, um, you know, while for much of, uh, this project on Little Falls Parkway itself, there, there isn't improved, um, access for pedestrians. There is improved access, um, you know, getting across Little Falls Parkway and getting between, um, the Capital Crescent Trail and the Little Falls Trail. So I think, uh, a, as well as to the, the parking lot on the, the north end. So, um, you know, without adding a, a fully dedicated space for pedestrians or a, a true shared-use area, um, you know, we are still making pedestrian improvements. Um, so for example, um, at the intersection of Dorset, um, we're, uh, proposing kind of some curb extensions that would shorten the crossing distance. And so there, there are still, um, you know, benefits to pedestrians here, even without there being a true dedicated space for pedestrians.
Okay, so if a pedestrian came to this space per se, I, I just think, I think you're gonna have some conflict here between cyclists and pedestrians. Cyclists that are probably going at a pretty fast rate of speed, and then pedestrians who are trying to get to one location. So I would just take one, I would take a little, uh, additional look to see if this is a desired path that the pedestrians would want to take and think about it from that perspective. You're doing a lot of great work here, and I'd hate for you to get to the end and find that you haven't accommodated all the, the potential users that are going to end up using the space and have to change things over again. So just some, some suggestions is just think about it a little bit further and explore the possibilities.
Yeah, um, you know, again, that was kind of where we had originally approached this from. Um, and, and this is, um, kind of where we, where we, through our public input process and, um, you know, through going through our planning board and county council, um, kind of where we've ended up. But the, the good thing is, is that, um, you know, it's a relatively short stretch that's bordered on both sides by the Little Falls Trail, as well as the Capital Crescent Trail. Um, so there is still, um, a, a pretty good space for pedestrians to walk, even if it's not directly on Little Falls Parkway.
Okay, and, and then one last question. Um, uh, and maybe you said this, and maybe it was in the presentation, and I missed it. Um, in your public engagement, have you gotten a, a fair amount of, have you gotten pushback from those who did not want to see, I can see that you might be hearing from motorists who don't want to see the road diet. Maybe you're hearing, hearing from cyclists, something on the other side of things. So just curious what, what kind sorts of, not specific comments, but what, just with the array that you're getting, level of controversy, I guess you're finding yourselves in.
Yeah, um, Andrew, if you want to speak to that, uh, I'm happy to, um.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, I've been involved, uh, with this project since two thousand seventeen, when we implemented the interim road diet just at the crossing. Um, we have received some community pushback. Um, I think there have been concerns about, uh, particularly drivers, uh, who utilize this road on, on almost a daily basis, um, you know, concerns about, um, it being a little bit slower, uh, to be able to drive, uh, along the parkway when the four-lane road becomes a two-lane road. Um, I think that's something not only that we see with this project, but other projects throughout the county, uh, where we have sort of taken what was previously a dedicated driveline and opened it up to another use. Um, you know, we, DOT installed bike lanes on North Georgetown Road. That, that was very contentious, sort of, uh, controversial as well. Um, so there, there has been some pushback, uh, but as Kyle mentioned, and as we discussed, there's also been a lot of support for it, uh, not only from bicyclists, but from, but from folks who, who, um, appreciate, I, I think, the, the goal we have is sort of improving, you know, providing safe, accessible, equitable connections, not only for cars, but, but for all users.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, that I think, um, some of those concerns that Andrew raised, uh, I think those are kind of exacerbated by the, the development in the Bethesda kind of area, as well as in the West Bart area. Um, the concern is kind of, you know, you're reducing the, the road capacity while there's all this development pressure, um, you know, occurring adjacent to it. So I, I think those are, are playing out at the same time. Um, you know, I think our traffic, uh, analysis and what we've studied on the, on the road since we've made these changes, support what we're doing. Um, but, but that's very much, um, part of the opposition is, is, is the, the road diet in the midst of, of development pressures at the same time.
Well, I, I, um, I appreciate, uh, the project and the fact that you're taking a look at this from the way, the approach that you are, and I know that it is not easy. Um, so thank you for your efforts, and Chair, thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Stidham and Commissioner McMahon. All good questions and help elucidate the challenges to the project, but also the benefits. So are there more questions at this time for our presenters on this information, uh, topic? Any further questions? Well, if there are no more questions, then I'm going to ask, um, us to, for the group to start our discussion, and I will start with Vice Chair Hewlett, please.
Well, I don't really have, um, a discussion. I remember some of this from my tenure at Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, and I do understand, um, I will say it was, it was good to see everyone again. Good to see, um, Mr. Sai from, uh, Montgomery Parks. And, and I do understand, I see, I, I'm thankful that there are fewer casualties there now. Um, and I just will remain, wait to see the other, um, when this comes back in September. Look for more information.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Um, no, I, I appreciate the, the information here. It's, it's a lot to digest. And, um, and I look forward to the, um, return in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall-Williams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It is a lot to digest. I'm sort of putting myself along that, um, area, and I would align myself with Commissioner Stidham, as well as Commissioner McMahon's, um, comments about, um, conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists and making sure that you're planning for that, because I can see it as an attractive green space for people to be walking in, and so it would be a shame to do all this work and not have accommodated that. So I hope you'll continue that. It sounds like you've already looked at some of it, but maybe, um, the September presentation will add a little bit more detail around that, um, piece of it, but otherwise, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall-Williams. Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Dixon. I'll move on and come back to Commissioner Dixon. Uh, Commissioner Davis.
Apologies, just having some trouble with the end mute button there. No additional comments from me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hassett.
No questions or comments for me either. Thank you.
Thank you. Come, thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Cozart.
Uh, thanks to the staff for, uh, all the work on this project and walking us through the many details of this, uh, project as well. I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon, any other comments?
Yeah, thanks to staff and, and really, uh, since you brought up to the, um, Montgomery County staff, uh, for working this hard issue. I've ridden this section of road. I know how busy the cross-country trail below Bethesda can get. I know with the traffic conflicts on there, so a great solution. I think we kind of proved during COVID and it continued to, that the Little Falls can survive and local traffic can survive on our, on our road diet, and so we should continue with that, but I, I do remain concerned about, uh, that pedestrian, uh, which not just walkers, but joggers and dogs and all the rest, and, and cyclists, um, on what's likely to be considered a multi-use path, not just a cycling trail, but, uh, we should continue on and, and consider those and make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
I echo Commissioner McMahon and also applaud you for taking a project like this on. Park Service has been taking on many projects like this, and I know how difficult and challenging it is to find that equitable space. And know that you're not going to make everybody happy, but you're going to make it a better place. So look forward to the review in September.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo. I had, I actually, I actually had. A question. I don't think it's related to this. There's, there's all this work that's. Being proposed on Arizona Avenue in the district that leads down. It's the downhill slope of Arizona, crossing all the way down to Canal Road. And I'm, I'm very curious as to whether it's related to this at all and connections to the capital, to the trail. And to the, and to the Parkway, but somebody can answer that after the meeting. They don't have to answer it right now. Okay. And, but I appreciate, I appreciate learning all about this and, and anything that is promoting. The kind of, the kind of access to recreational pathways and everything like this, I think is, is welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Argo, and I would just like to thank Mr. Si, Mr. Lucas, and of course staff person. Mr. While for the presentation and providing the overview for this project. It's, 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 I love road diets. I love. As others have mentioned, access cyclists and, and for pedestrians and therein lies the rub. I think that it's, it could be an attractive. Very attractive place for someone like me who does enjoy a great walk. And I just want to reiterate again, though, that the commission's role here is limited. And we appreciate this briefing and it provides us with background and context for the presentation in September. And we look forward to the formal review coming later, but you certainly have your work cut out for you. We appreciate what you're doing. This is all about. You know, certainly about climate inequity too, and, and we appreciate that. So if there are no further comments or questions, or are there? We will get back to you, Commissioner Argo. We heard your question. Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, we will conclude then our open session for today and our next regular meeting will be. Not July fourth, it's going to be the week after July fourth, so it's going to be July eleventh at one PM. So we'll be meeting in the second week.
Right.
So is someone, is, is Commissioner Dixon back? No, I don't. Okay, I thought I heard someone talking. I'm sorry. So we are going to have our meeting this, on the second Thursday of the month to accommodate the fourth of July holiday. And if there is no further business, we will stand adjourned and hope that you all, many of you could join us tonight at the Martin Luther King Library. At six o'clock for our celebration of the centennial for the National Capital Plan and Commission. And recognition to Julia Costa and staff who work so hard on the exhibit that's going to be there for three months and traveling around town this summer. But also to all the staff who've contributed. This is certainly a reason to celebrate. It's a great group. And contributes mightily to the experience we all have as residents and visitors to the capital. So thank you. And grateful for all the help that's been given to this effort. Thank you all. Next month.